I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Council, you've been provided a copy of the agenda for this evening as mentioned before. I do want to make one change to the amendment, I mean to the agenda, which is item 12B, which is a second read for the ordinance creating chapter nine fire protection and prevention of the city of Mableton. I'd like to defer this item to the next meeting. And I know, Madam Attorney, you had some special reason to move this based on some communications, right?
Yes, Mayor. So we've given, we provided copies to the Fire Safety and Insurance Commissioner's Office. And we've, so we've sent him certified and email, and I've also emailed it courtesy copy to the attorney. And I just want to follow up and make sure that they don't have any adjustments. And then that will save us adopting this tonight and then coming back on the 24th if they have any comments.
Thank you for that. So that's the only proposed change to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a request that we also defer item 12C for the first read on ordinance updating zoning and permitting fee schedule?
Asked for item 12C to be deferred, first read on ordinance, why would we want to defer first read?
Because I'm just now seeing the fee schedule and I have some information about it. I would like to verify before we have the discussion about it. I don't think we have enough information to speak on this item tonight.
Is there something missing, you think, ma'am? I mean, because it was, is it in the agenda packet? I think it's in the packet, the information.
Was any of this information updated today on this agenda packet that wasn't in here earlier this week?
Yes, this was recently updated. So just to give you a little bit of background, I noticed that there were some fees that were missing. And we're about to commence zoning on March 3rd. So I asked Rob to supplement and to provide the additional information, and he agreed to do that. I asked him last week. He agreed to do that. He agreed to work over the weekend. So this weekend, he provided the supplemental information. So what I've done is I've prepared this document that reflects that supplemental information. This would be first read. We would have a public hearing on the 10th of March, and then we would have the final adoption on the 12th. So if there's anything in here that you need me to adjust or change, you can give me the comments tonight. You can do it offline.
I don't, I can't give the comments tonight because I don't know what is currently in the fee schedule with the county where we're transferring it from. Can you tell us when you updated this agenda packet with this fee schedule? Because this is the first time I'm seeing it.
Well, we've had it from Rob for, I would say, less than 72 hours. So we, as soon as we got it, as soon as I got it from Rob, that Monday, I created this ordinance to incorporate his amendments. Now, here's the thing. The good part is that we're going to have a public hearing, and it's not until March. So if you don't have the comments, and I don't expect you to have it tonight because you just got it, I just got it.
Is there a reason we can't defer it then?
Well, if we defer it, here's the consequence. We have to follow the Zoning Procedures Act for this. So that means that we have to publish in a newspaper notice of the public hearing, and that publication has to occur at least 15 days in advance of the public hearing. So if we defer this, then it's going to push not having the fee schedule back for just the length that we defer it. So if you.
Is this fee schedule available in the public agenda packet? Does the public even know what this fee schedule says?
Yeah, the public knows, and then they'll also have, so here's the thing with the public. The public can see it within the agenda packet, and they'll have the opportunity now through March 10th to look at it, to compare it to the counties. Now, my recommendation to Rob was to simply mirror the county so that the public is familiar with what the county's charging. So there's no, little disruption into what they anticipate or they expect the cost would be. So my understanding is that he did accomplish that. But I myself plan to, between now and March 10th, to also make that cross comparison and review it as well.
And that's the whole reason for the first read and the multiple reads that we have to do. So if there's anything that we need to bring out in this view of the fee schedule, we can bring that up. And we may have the document that we're going to the public hearing, and everybody can, you know, weigh in on that public hearing. And council has the opportunity to make any updates that we see fit, right?
That's correct.
Do we have what the county currently, the county's current fee schedule to make a comparison tonight? Like, is that available?
Now, I can ask Rob to provide that. Because, you know, we hired him to facilitate this. I didn't check behind him, but I can ask him as a courtesy. I don't think he'd have any problem just providing the copy of the counties so we can double check and make sure that they're consistent.
Going forward, if.
Is there a thought that you want to know what the county is doing so that we think about the way that we're going in, or is it?
I see a fee that I am not okay with on the fee schedule. That is what it, and I want to see all that.
What's the fee that you have?
I have backyard chickens. I have never paid $100 for a backyard chicken permit.
Can I, hold on for a second. I don't, that's, I don't want to get us too far off, off right now, because that's not germane, I think, specifically. Right now, I think the question is, do we add this to the, do we move forward with the first read? Or do we stick with a plan of first read, public hearing, and then second read?
I mean, has anyone on the council seen the fee schedule? Have you examined it and looked at it? Are you even capable of speaking intelligently tonight about it?
Mayor, I had those fees in the Monday agenda packet, and they were available in these two documents. And also, it was online ever since, ever since Monday morning.
I've reviewed the agenda packet over the weekend.
With that being said, I would like to move us forward.
I have another question about the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Our work session yesterday, we had some comments about one of the items on this agenda. And I noticed earlier today when reviewing the agenda packet, that also was not updated. So do we need to pull that out of the consent agenda? It's item 10B.
So the copy in your package should be the updating copy?
I updated it this morning. Has she, have you refreshed? Or, yeah, we updated it when you sent it to me. When was that? Was that this morning?
You're speaking and talking about the 10-minute limit, the five-minute limit.
Is that refreshed since our discussion this morning?
Yeah, but when we talked about it during our work session, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but.
Are we discussing the item now, or are we talking about?
No, we're, no. I think, I think was, to this, to this item 10B, the question was, has it been updated? And the answer I'm getting is yes, it has been updated.
We changed it to five minutes per the discussion on Monday.
Okay.
Thank you. We can leave it on consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions related to the agenda? With that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written with the, with the deferment of the second read of the fire protection prevention till next meeting.
I move to approve the agenda with the exception of item 12B and ordinance creating chapter nine fire protection and prevention of the city of Mableton Code of Ordinance for other lawful purposes, to defer that to our next meeting.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Do we have a second to the motion? Being, being the fact that there.
I will second the motion, Mayor.
Okay.
However, we just only ask that we take a second to look into what Councilwoman actually brought up and make sure that it reads the way that we want it to read.
For 12B?
12, was it 12B?
12C.
Can I actually have a quick question? I know you said the fee schedule is.
Oh, she's talking about 12C. There was.
So.
Unless I'm doing something wrong, is it, is it?
Is she talking about 12B or 12C?
It's on page 85.
Hold on one second, Councilwoman. We are talking about item, 12B was, was the item that was up for.
So the idea was.
And the second, there's a motion that's on the floor.
And I second it.
Okay, but you can't second it with a disclaimer.
I, no, I'm seconding.
Okay. Okay, so you're seconding. So, so if you second it, is there any more discussion about that?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed, please.
My discussion is that when we spoke about this item specifically, we gave the, this is in the weeds, but we gave a five-minute for the person to be able to speak. This does not include the additional time that we spoke about if we want to have questions or if we want to extend the time. We said 10 minutes.
So it should be immediately after that.
Yeah.
It says additional time may be allocated by the mayor to address city council questions and comments. So may be allocated by the mayor versus may be allocated for the city council and mayor to be able to ask questions and comments. I think there's, I, I know where you're at. I think there, it's really, we got to be specific. If we want to allow public figures to come and speak, and then if we have comment, then we should be able to ask those questions and comments. And if the mayor decides that we need to extend this time, then that's different than what it says right here.
I think during the work session, we did say that additional time may be allocated by the mayor and council.
Do we want to pull this from?
To address questions and comments.
So the way I have it worded now, the mayor is the presiding officer.
I'm the presiding officer.
To make that determination. But I can amend it to make it the mayor and council would make that determination.
So if, in this situation, if somebody was up there right now, they spoke for five minutes, do I have an option to ask a question?
As presiding officer, if I allow it.
Yes, absolutely.
So I have to ask you.
Well, technically, you have to ask me to get permission from, to speak. You have to be acknowledged, correct? So if you say, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, you're acknowledged, you ask the question.
I'd like to call a point of order. We're having discussion for a second for, this is about approval of the agenda. If we want to have discussion about the topic, then let's pull it from consent agenda and we can discuss it.
Fair enough. The question, though, is, was it updated to meet what was said before? If it's updated in what it said before, you're okay with it. We leave it on a consent agenda. If not, then, as Councilwoman said, we pull it from the consent agenda and we talk about it under new business.
I don't necessarily believe that this reflects what we talked about in the work session. So I would like to see it either addressed or pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay, so with that being said, there is a motion on the floor to approve the, to approve the agenda as, as written with the exception of deferring the second read of the ordinance creating chapter nine fire protection prevention. That has been moved and seconded. We've had discussion. That is a motion on the floor. I'll call the question on that vote. And if that's not the way the council wants to go, we vote that down and then we move forward. So at this point in time, all in favor of voting for the approval of the minutes as written with the exception of deferring the second read of the ordinance creating chapter nine fire protection, fire prevention to next meeting, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Do we have a count? That's tied.
Are y'all nays?
Can I suggest a friendly amendment? And that would be her.
Can we, can we hear from city clerk? What was the?
I can't, I couldn't tell if y'all were nays or nays. Y'all nays?
Aye.
Aye?
It was three, three.
Okay.
Well, if you do a friendly amendment, it would be her motion with the exception that you also add pulling it and adding it as a later item.
If, I think the motion was on, who's the original motion on?
I made the original motion.
Would you like to make, would you now, that we have a tie, would you like me a friendly, friendly motion to keep the deferment on 12B, but also remove item 10B from the consent agenda?
Can I make a friendly new motion?
She still has the motion on the floor, ma'am.
I move to approve the agenda as written with, with the exception of deferring item 12B to our next meeting and removing item 10B from the consent agenda.
Which will place it on new business.
And we will transfer that on to our new business.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as written with the exception of moving item 12B to the next meeting and 10B to new business as item 12D. All those in favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, item 12D?
Yes, it will become 12D.
Okay, it will become, okay.
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. We can proceed with the agenda, moving 12 or 10B to 12D.
Are you saying D as an delta?
Yes. All right, thank you, council, for that. Moving along in with the agenda, we have one appointment that we have to make this evening. Disappointments related to the Mableton Development Authority. As many are aware, the former. As many are aware, the former South Cobb Redevelopment Authority was recreated, if you will, into the Mableton Development Authority this past, or last year, which does give the City Council the ability to make appointments to the Mableton Development Authority. One of those appointments is up now, which is the appointment of the Mableton Development Authority Chair. Council, in the packet, you guys have the information for Mr. Jason Gaines, who's the current Board Chair now, has been Board Chair for several years. You have his resume and his background information. I think most of you have met him at one point in time or another. And this resolution simply seeks his reappointment as Chair to the Mableton Development Authority. With that, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution appointing Mr. Jason Gaines as Chair of the Mableton Development Authority.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appoint Jason Gaines as the Mableton Development Authority Chair.
I second.
And give my 100% backing for him in that role.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Oladipo. Any discussion? All those in, I'll call the question now. All those in favor of resolution, in favor of appointing Jason Gaines as a Mableton Development Authority Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. I don't think Mr. Gaines is here tonight, but I'll make sure he, he gets the information.
That he's got to get to work.
He's working. He's working for sure. All right, this takes us to item 9, which is our Public Comment section. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment cards for this evening?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll open public comments. You may proceed, ma'am.
Okay, there's a two-minute time limit. The Mayor and Council does not do conversation back and forth because we're in a business meeting and we have to get to our business to vote on. And I will call the first name as Joanna Connor. And after Joanna is Brielle Toomey, Toomey.
If you guys could come to the podium or to the-
To the Chair.
Thank you. I am Joanna Connor and I am a resident of Mableton. Well, right now I'll stay all, but it's in the city of Mableton. And I think pretty much all of you got my email regarding the Auto Hangar event venue with the cars racing up and down the street in, on Harris Street. I come to you because the manager of the establishment saw out, saw us out one day and told us that he had already come before the Mayor and the Council about the business. I'm not so sure. But, so, there's loud cars speeding up and down, running stop signs. We've called the police. And this is on a street that is at a railroad crossing. And years ago, that railroad crossing was closed down and blocked because of the, through traffic, dangerous to the neighborhood. And it's at the end, down there, where the railroad is crossed, blocked. In November, he got a business license through the city of Mableton. And it is, the business type says Entertainment Meeting and Special Event Organizer. Nowhere does it say that it's going to hold events and all these cars will be coming through. Then I found out that back in October, he had put in a application for a special land use permit with the county for a wrecker and an auto salvage yard, which I submit, gave the document to the clerk that showed it was going to be denied by Cobb County. And there was 15 areas they looked at, and it gave reasons why that was going to be denied. And it all went back to the safety of the residents, safety of the neighborhood. But before the, they went to the final hearing, that was withdrawn. And so then, this business has been put in place. I know, and I come here today too because through the county, they told me that become March 3rd, the zoning will be taken over to the, to the city. And so I wanted to make you guys aware. I know you guys probably got my email, and I want to say I am going to write it up. I'm a teacher. It was not written well. So I'm going to write it up where it, you know, it's not going to give teachers a bad name here because I did it on my cellphone. So I am going to write up everything that I have found out and videos. I encourage you to look at Instagram, the Auto Hangar, and it's going to show you cars doing the drifting and the donuts with flames coming out the back inside of a building. And I'm just afraid that's going to lead to someone getting killed in that building. And then there are two others that's going to speak about an impact on the church and more about the neighborhood. So, thank you. And I'm sure you're here more. But thank you for your friendliness and speaking to us also.
Brielle Toomey. And after Brielle is Kathy Evans.
Hi, my name is Brielle Toomey and I'm also a teacher. I teach special education. So I just kind of wanted to show like what it looks like in the neighborhood living there. And I've recently moved back. So I haven't been here for long. I moved in with my grandmother after my grandfather then passed away. So it's just my grandmother there by herself with my brother and I and my dad. So this is something I had typed up just to show what it looks like now. So I'm also here for this car promoting business that has been a recent startup at the end of my street. These loud sports cars have caused extreme traffic and chaos to our once peaceful neighborhood. These cars have been videoed by residents in the neighborhood running stop signs and passing another, and one another at extreme speeds. All while this reckless driving is happening, there are small children in the neighborhood that are playing outside. People are walking their dogs and elderly are attempting to get to their daily mail in the mailbox, such as people like my grandmother. Because our mailbox is actually across the street, so she has to cross the road where this business is. So they are constantly flying and she's having to actually cross the road. So this Instagram startup company has put, that has put up residence at the end of our neighborhoods includes amateur donut competitions inside this warehouse with loud exhaust competitions that sound like gunshots that backfire as late as 1:00 a.m. And we have actually called before because I thought someone was shot, honestly. They're so loud. These so-called influencers started as an annoyance at first. For example, one night I came home because this company was having like an open house. When I came home, I couldn't even pull into my own driveway to park in the garage because these cars were parked all the way up the road. So then I had to drive around the neighborhood hoping maybe somebody that was walking up and down the road would move their car. But now, since it started as an annoyance, it has now became a huge consafety concern, concern for myself and others. I'm now nervous to come down the road because at one point, these drivers have been in the middle of the road at extreme speeds, right down the middle, causing me to swerve to avoid a head-on collision. I am now nervous for my grandma to walk outside and across the street because of what if, what if one of these unresponsible drivers do not see her until it's too late? Or my neighbors next door that are in elementary school that love to play baseball outside. It scares me that one day someone in my neighborhood will get seriously hurt. And I want to thank you in advance and hoping that maybe we can come together as a team and a community to work together so nobody does get hurt. So thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Evans. And after Kathy is John Toomey.
Hello, I am Kathy Evans and I am not a teacher. Except for Sunday School on Sunday mornings. And that's what I want to talk to you about. Our church is right on Harris Street. And there's very, there's a very small amount of frontage. So there's not much property between our church and the road. And this past Sunday, of course, it was Super Bowl Sunday, but these cars are racing up and down the road during our church services with their loud motors and revving their motors in front of us, the church. We also have elderly people that come to our church. And for them to be able to turn into Harris Drive and park in the church parking lot is very concerning. We also have children that go out front to play. And again, there's very little space for them to do that. But we have to literally hold on to them to keep them from getting too close to the road. And this has become a real burden. One of the things too is that our, our own minister is afraid to go out at Harris Drive. He goes down Davis Street, which to me is not much better, but he goes that way to avoid some of the traffic coming in and out of Harris. And that's, that's a real, a real problem. The noise is a concern as far as, again, our elderly members. We do have microphones and it's easier for them to hear with those. But unfortunately, this happening outside is causing a disturbance also. So we appreciate you taking our time, taking your time today to listen to us and to take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Toomey.
Good evening. I like to appreciate welcome us here to speak about the community. I know the community is something that we're all trying to put forth and have a positive impact on. And my concern is, I do live in the same neighborhood off Harris Street. And to kind of paint the picture here, this is a neighborhood of about 35 residents that it's affecting. Real small neighborhood. Kids are playing. This past Sunday, I was getting ready to go up to the church service and this four-way stop sign that we have videos of them not just running a stop sign, but passing and racing each other through the stop sign, you know? It's at the church. While I was watching it, about the time a silver, brand-new silver Camaro come down through there and there was a four-year-old girl. And that Camaro never stopped and that girl about got hit. I saw the dad grab the girl. I knew he was okay. I decided, since I was going to church, I could ask for forgiveness then. And I went down and talked to the kids. But there's thousands of them down there. There's not hundreds. There's, I mean, there's tags from Massachusetts, from Florida, from... I mean, this is an event that is out there that people travel here to do. And you're talking a neighborhood so small and you've got thousands of cars in and out, not just, you know, if they're peaceful cars doing, obeying the law, have at it. It's a public roadway. But the image they're giving us here in Mableton now of racing and drifting, and we've all seen the news, Channel 2 News has been posting stuff about these drifters and these racers and people getting hurt and killed. And with it getting on the news, the last thing I would like to have is the city of Mableton now being on the news and publicized because of the same event happening in our neighborhood. That's huge to me for a deposit of our, of our community. And I'll do anything we can do to help address it and move forward with it. Scared me when I saw a kid about get killed, but it, it, there's a time and place for everything in a neighborhood and church service is going on. And literally when Kathy was telling you about the church service, that front door is probably from me to you, Mayor, from the road. So when they're racing side by side coming through there, one of them cars hits each other. Where are they coming? Right through there where everybody walked out of church. And that's a concern. So I appreciate your time listening to us, listening to everybody. And I look forward to seeing the resolution coming in the future.
Thank you, sir.
There's not any more cards?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we're going to conclude our public comment period and move on with the Agenda. So item 10, again, is our Consent Agenda. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So the one discussion is again about 10B. Are we going to keep that?
Yeah, 10B has been moved to 12D.
Okay, so we need to say that in motion?
No, no, it's already been made.
Okay.
With that being said, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Let's move to item 12, which is the New Business. We don't have any unfinished business for this evening. So 12A of our New Business is actually a second read. This is the Ordinance Creating Article, uh, Creating Article 2, which are elections under Chapter 2 Administration. That is how the city of Mableton will move forward in conducting our own elections via the county. And there's, again, second read of this ordinance. So Madam Attorney, is there anything new or substantive that's changed with this second read?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance of the second read, the Ordinance, Chapter, Article 2 Elections Under Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances.
I make a motion to approve the Ordinance Creating Article 2 Elections Under Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances and for other lawful purposes.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion, item, Council?
The only question I have is, is this something that we're going to have to do continuously? I'm just, for clarification.
I don't, I don't think so. Unless there's some substantive change, we shouldn't have to. Or unless the county, something substantially changes, but...
Yeah, as, as you grow and as time goes by, there might be pieces of legislation that you want to supplement or incorporate. But as far as the overall process of administration of your elections, that's going to be facilitated through an IGA with the county. And we're just waiting to receive that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from other members? Hearing none, motion's been seconded. I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the second read of the Ordinance Creating Article 2 Elections Under Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. It's going to move now to item 12C. Item 12C is a first read. This is the Ordinance of Updating the Zone, Zoning and Permitting Fee Schedule and for Other Lawful Purposes. This is the item that was prematurely discussed a little while ago, so happy to open the floor. But in keeping pace here, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have to entertain a motion because this is the first read. At this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor. And Councilman Al, would you like to have the floor?
Yes, I would like to see the $100 chicken permit be removed.
For what purpose?
There's a fee for backyard chickens keeping for $100. I would like to see that removed from this fee schedule.
What page is she's asking? 85.
Yep, 85.
I, I don't, Councilwoman Ferguson asked a question for what purpose? I didn't.
Because it's dumb.
So are taxes, but can we get more why it's dumb?
It's never, for one, the whole purpose of having backyard chickens is for sustainable food, to have a food source close to home that is affordable. $100, is this yearly? Is this when you apply for the first time? Like what is this fee? How often is it?
I think that's, I think that's a good question. Like what is the-
Cobb County does not assess this fee.
Are we, are we only concerned with the backyard chickens or are we also concerned with the temporary tent permit?
I've been looking those up. That one's the same as Cobb County. The sales office permit is $50. That's the same as Cobb County. As I said before, and the reason I want to pull it from the Agenda is because I haven't had time to review it to look at all everything.
Got it, so...
I'd like to say that- I'd say that we were provided the agenda on Friday. I reviewed the agenda over the weekend. I was never told that there was a change made after this weekend up until this point. It wasn't discussed at our work session. I don't think it's very fair that we're discussing it now when it, if this was...
Yeah, I think this is the time to discuss it, but I get where you're coming from. Are, in your search, was the existing...
I was searching a total of two minutes while people were talking, so I don't know, I probably don't have all the answers for everything you're asking.
Can you let me ask my question? It's, it's actually helps. So, even when you look at the existing structure relocation permit, that's a hundred dollars, does that seem feasible? Or based on what you were able to search up? I'm just asking.
I'm unsure of the answer, Councilman Ferguson.
Okay. So then I would agree with Councilwoman Ock that we need to make sure that these fees, we understand what we're assessing. And just like we did with the, the sanitation permits and those fees, that we understand what these numbers are. And luckily, this is a first read, so we have an opportunity to go and do that and then to come back.
Thank you, Councilman. And to, again, to go back to the previous conversation, I think that was something that our city attorney said she would do. I know that the discussion, the previous discussion with Rob Hosack was that they asked, I do remember specifically asking him to go back and review what the county had versus what we had. I, I do recall at one point in time, it was a version discussion about, did he pull forth the most recent version and things of that nature? So, I know, Madam Attorney, you had, I have already committed that you will reach back out to Mr. Hosack to at least get an understanding of what he pulled.
Is this a standard fee? This backyard chicken permit, is that standard?
So, my request to Rob was to mirror identical what the county has. So, assuming, and that is what he said he was doing, so trusting that that is what he provided, then the question becomes, one, is this something that Mableton wants to continue? And I think what I can do is, I have not researched the backyard chicken feed issue. What that will require me to do is to look at our zoning code to see what regulations we have in place for backyard chickens and then to see how that fits this fee schedule. I can do that analysis and assessment and Councilwoman Ock, I can let you know what I find.
If you'd like to look at it.
I'm sorry?
I have the form pulled up now from the county website if you'd like to look at it, but there is no.
Well, so we would be subject to what the city adopted. So, I would go back to the city's zoning code on this and see what the specs and regulations are. And then that is what this fee would be applied to. I would just have to do the research on it.
And Councilwoman Ock brought up, is this an annual fee? Or is this a one-time fee? Or what is the frequency?
So, I would need to look, because I, I have no clue about what, what the speculations and regulations are with backyard chickens. But I can research it.
I think it goes beyond that, because these are, these are permit fees.
These are permit fees, so... One-time or annual?
Are we gonna assess fees for backyard dogs and cats too? Like, I just don't think the fee in general makes sense. Even, even if the county did assess it, which they don't, I don't think it makes sense. I want it off.
Yeah, so the first thing I'll do is I'll confirm with Rob, hey, is this actually what we requested? Is this consistent with the county's? So, I'll confirm that with him. And then I will pull the regulations that you have in place on backyard chickens. That will answer a lot of the questions that we have.
And then the third question is, the third question is about the permits themselves. Because I, I, you know, if this is a, if this is a garage sale, you have to pull a permit every time you go to have a garage sale. If it's a chicken, you have to permit, pull a permit for each chicken you get or, or each, each year. I think that it could have some clarifications around that.
Yeah, your code should address this sufficiently.
And it may, but the problem is that the actual, this actual document itself does not.
Well, so this document simply gives a cost for what is outlined in the code.
Right, to understand.
So, we need to see what is outlined in the code to see what this cost is associated.
Standing alone, as, as a standalone document, it, it obviously has, opens questions. So, we need to marry the two together to be able to answer those questions, I think. Okay.
I will research that. And then if, is the entire council interested or just Councilwoman Ock?
I think we need to... So, we need to, we want to know. So, because there may be other items as well. Again, to her point, this is the fir, this is the first read. So, I want to make sure that the entirety of the council has time to go back and review in conjunction with the code ordinance and then determine on if there's any, any suggested changes to the fees.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, Councilwoman Ock brought up a great point about backyard chickens, but it doesn't stipulate about backyard cats and dogs. So, is there something else that we might want to look at for these zoning permits that maybe not, might not be listed here and that we want to address as a council? And I understand that we're bringing on what Cobb County was already doing. But this is one of those opportunities for the council to be able to say what we want versus what Cobb County's been doing in the past. Council, am I, am I off?
Yeah, so there's somewhere in your code, which is there from Cobb County, there is somewhere in your code, a section that says, if you do this with prospective backyard chickens, you have to get this permit. And this is when you have to get it and this is the process.
Right, and those are the types of things we need to make sure we bring out when we bring up something like this. Go ahead.
What she's saying is that is already fine. The question is, would this, this actually sets the fee structure for it?
Correct.
So, I'm simply saying marry the two up, but we have already passed zoning ordinance.
So, our zoning ordinance does ask for registration for backyard chickens, which I completed. But there is no fee associated with it. It's just so it's on the, the, the record. If there's ever a code issue, they look and they said, okay, this councilwoman out has chickens back there. If someone had complaints about noise or a booster or something of that nature, that violated code.
So, again, this document marries those two together. So, so the ordinance, so the ordinance says what, what we, what we have said is acceptable or not. And this document places a fee schedule to the zoning and permitting that we've allowed. So, if we've allowed permitting, then that's already codified. This document sets the fee schedule for those permits.
So, does it, does the document that we've already approved...
It does regulate backyard chickens.
A hundred dollars?
No. It regulates backyard chickens, but it does not establish a fee structure. That's what this document does.
Okay, so should we look at other places where the current document doesn't adopt a fee structure, but we might want to? Like, for, in her instance, like, you keep your dog outside, you keep your cat outside, you keep your, you keep donkeys, whatever that is.
There is no permitting for dogs. Okay. Let's just be clear about that.
Mayor, looking at other, just other random cities in Georgia, there's like a twenty-dollar animal fee and not just backyard chicken. Just animal fee in the backyard and it's just twenty dollars. So, even if we're looking to assess a fee, a hundred dollars, I think is, is on the high end.
And I, and I think that's, if we want to take a comparable analysis and do it, sure, we have time to do that, because this is the first read. What I'm trying to do is make sure that our attorney has some marching orders to go forth with. I think as a council, I would implore everyone to, to do some research, to look at other items that may not be on here either. Or to look at all the fee structure and see if there's any suggested changes. So, yeah, that's, that's amount of research that, that anybody can do to get comfortable with what an amount may be for any of those fees. But thank you for that. Quick, go ahead.
So, in past discussions and things like, let's use our trash ordinance, for example, when you gave suggestions and on second read, those changes were implemented in the ordinance, I am making a suggestion now to put that at zero dollars for backyard chickens. Will I see that change on our second read?
She has just suggested twenty. I, what I've suggested was everyone do the research. And make a suggestion. I mean, I think that's, that's valid, but if a comparative analysis is asked, I think that's reasonable as well.
So, if there, if there are differing opinions in terms of how much the amount should be, I mean, what are we gonna do and how do we vote for it? I mean, how are we gonna put it on the fee schedule so that we can vote? If one person wants zero, another one is twenty, at what point do we come to an agreement?
Well, hopefully, hopefully between now and then, we can come to an agreement about what that should be.
I think we have clear direction apparently on our trash ordinance, but those changes were made. So, just so procedurally, knowing when changes are made and when they are ignored.
So, so we did discuss this at last meeting. I advised the council that there were certain things that I noticed were left off and I asked Rob to supplement. And I asked him to expedite and he agreed to work over the weekend and he provided it over the weekend. And then we created this based on what he provided and updated the portal that Monday. But we're getting this at the same time, pretty much in real time, as that you're receiving this. Now, I did look at the county code to see what their regulation is. Your code picked this up and I just need to confirm that Rob didn't make adjustments to this, and I'll confirm that. But assuming that your code mirrors the county code, what the county code says is that, it says that a permit is required for backyard chickens for properties under two acres. And with respect to that permit, the person agrees to certain stipulations. It says, for example, there should be a maximum ratio of one backyard chicken per five thousand square feet on any lot less than two acres. Only hens are kept on the property. The backyard chickens shall be kept maintained fenced area to the rear of the house. Coops, it has restrictions on coops. It says the owner shall keep the property maintained in a fashion that eliminates the potential negative effects that result from poultry, that they shall not be maintained as a nuisance to disturb your neighbors, that the slaughter of them on site is prohibited. And then the last section says that the community development director or their designee shall develop an application form for review of these requests. So, this gives the city notice of who is maintaining these coops. And then the person would need to notify, assuming that you adopt the county's regulation, the county, under the county code, you would notify the county that this is what you plan to do. The city would catalog that this is existing on this particular parcel. And it says that the person seeking to keep and raise chickens in accordance with this section shall first submit a complete application. So, if you want to do this, this is the application fee. So, you pay that one hundred dollar fee to get this approval. And then once you have the approval, you don't have to renew this every year. You just have that approval to operate. It's the city's discretion as to whether they want to. It sounds to me like the county was not enforcing this. But it's the city's discretion as to whether you want to enforce this and whether you want to keep it within your, your zoning code. If you do not want to keep it, if you do not assess a fee on this, what I would recommend is that maybe you, well, I guess you could have, so the question becomes, do you want to assess a fee? And if you don't want to assess a fee, the next question becomes, do you want to keep this regulation in place? And if you do want to keep the regulation in place, then we just need your understanding that there should be no cost for this application.
Is this for new instances? Or is this for everybody that's currently doing this in the city, would then need to go and do a new application?
No, you don't have to redo your application. So, if you did the process through the county, you're approved, you're good to go.
How do they get certified through the city that this, that they're good?
Well, so we don't have a process to audit. And it, my suspicion, based on just what I've heard, these conversations, is that the county is not heavily enforcing this. So, that means you're probably not going to know whether someone is approved or has gone through the process until their neighbor makes a complaint. And then at that point, you would look at your records and you would see whether they had filed an application with you. You'd look at the county's records, you'd see whether they filed an application with the county. And it would just give you the regulatory T, T to immediately shut the business down. Or to require that they cease and desist if they continue and that they actually apply if they operate and find in, in conformity with the code. And then if they're operating in conformity with the code, then unfortunately, you know, if their neighbors do have an issue, that's just their entitlement.
I, I think this boils down to that there is regulation in place, there is permitting in place. I think the question is boiled down to if there's a fee or not. And Councilman Ock has said that she would like to have no fee. Councilwoman Oadapo has done a cursory search and says that there are some areas that are at least charging something. At this point, I must think it would be prudent to just see what other cities are charging and then make a determination amongst the council of what that should be. It may be nothing, it may be a, some other fee.
And, and I think my, to your point, my question is why we're calling out the backyard chicken? Like, what else could fit in categories that we need to look at versus just the chicken?
So, that's what I asked earlier, was that for the council, as individuals, do the research on, on, on any and all and be able to make some determination. I mean, we don't have to go one by one as reporting, but if there is something that is seen to be not to your liking, to let it be known. If, if there is some consternation about it, I do think doing comparative analysis works. It's just, that's work that needs to be done to come, to do the research and compile it. But if, if the council feels best upon doing comparative research, that's, that's probably, that's not something that Rob has done. We know that.
If the intent was just to transfer verbatim, it's what the county has, apples to apples, then, then that's, just make it zero. And, and I'm pretty, and I've almost checked the whole list. It seems to, most of them seem to be correct.
Emilio, can we please confirm with Rob? I mean, if the county's not charging a fee, then I don't think we should if the, you know, intent was to, you know, lift and shift.
Yeah, I'll definitely confirm with him. Like, my, my request to him was to mirror the county. And I'd be trusting, I did not audit behind him to see if he actually did that. But I will confirm with him. And I'll actually ask him if he could provide a copy of the schedules that he pulled from the county to base these amounts off of.
Well, I mean, that, that's the first ask, right, is, is to Rob, so...
So, it is available on cobbcounty.org/community-developmentforms. It's on the website, each form and each price. So, it could be confirmed relatively easy without Rob Hosack.
Well, I acknowledge that, but part of my concern is that if that wasn't accurate, we want to make sure there is accuracy across the board.
Yeah, if you want to know definitively where he based his amount from, then I can ask him for the documents. And then I can just share that with you, when I can confirm that the documents that he provided are consistent with the amounts that he listed here.
I would like to make sure there's consistency and accuracy with the work that he did. Yes.
And then also to prevent this from happening in the future, is it possible for us, I know you got the information, you know, on Monday. It takes time for us to be able to look through the document, be able to provide, you know, our feedback. And so, if it's possible for us to get that information sooner, so we can spend more time, make more of an informed decision and then come have, you know, discussion around it, I think that'll be more beneficial as opposed to, you know, getting that information and we're trying to digest it and we don't have enough time.
Yeah, ideally, we would, so I would never put anything on the agenda that I just received that Sunday. So, I would never do that. But the only thing is that you guys are opening up the permitting process on the third. So, that means that if we don't go through the two reads, the newspaper publication, the public hearing and the final adoption before March third, so right now, we actually are going to have to put a moratorium in place, a temporary moratorium. And I'll be bringing that back on the twenty-sixth. And that is because the Marietta Daily Journal would have had to have received these adjustments last week for us to publish it in sufficient time to not have to ask you to have a special meeting. So, the quickest process to not have to ask you to have a special meeting would be to utilize this meeting as first read, publish it as soon as we can legally publish it, and then use the next available meeting as your second read, which would be March tenth, and then to have adoption for March twelfth. And what I plan to do is on February twenty-sixth, I'm going to bring you a moratorium. And with that moratorium, we'll add... And what that moratorium will ask is for a temporary cessation, allowing staff to not accept applications and permits until you adopt this on the twelfth. Because right now, pursuant to your code and your notice to the county, they are authorized to accept these applications on the third, but you don't have cost for those applications.
So, and that's in general, because the county itself stopped doing zoning when? In January sometime?
Yeah, I've been told that the county is not taking applications or is telling people that they're, they don't have sufficient time to bring it through its course so that they're asking people to wait until Mabelton opens its doors.
And, and this is a much deeper conversation, but we have said for them to, they stopped at some point. And then we're gonna pick up at another point, what about everybody that was there before? So December.
Now, we have asked them not to stop until March third. And legally, you know, they, under pursuant to the law, you know, they should accept applications until March third, but we cannot force their hand on that. We, you know, we can't send them, you know, a demand saying, you know, you, you need to accept these applications. And I get, from an administrative standpoint, why they don't want to, and that's because they're not gonna bring the process to fruition, so it would have a level of inconsistency. But legally, we've asked them to continue to accept the process through March third.
So we, we need to understand who's lingering. Because it sounds like there's a number of applications that could possibly be lingering out there that are not being heard by Cobb County and not yet being heard by Mabelton.
Well, they're just not, they're just not accepting it.
They're just not accepting it.
So what I anticipate is that...
Well, but, but what I'm asking is, the stuff that started in December or before somebody determined that they weren't gonna hear any more applications, those people are sitting there and they've got a zoning request, and they put it in through Cobb County. Cobb County says, we're no longer gonna hear it. Mabelton says, we're not ready to hear it. But they've got, they've already submitted their, their request.
Well, there should be nobody in that vote. Because that vote, it's similar to your business licensing. The people who the county took their money from, and they took their money and they said, we're gonna provide you this service, with business licensing, the county still provided that service. So my understanding is that if you got through the door, if you, if they accepted your application, if they took your money, then they're going to give you the service that you paid for.
That's what I need you to say.
What's being blocked is just the people who are now attempting to get in that door. And they're saying it's shut now, and we're redirecting you and asking you to wait until Mabelton opens its doors on March third.
And so, and what you just said is what I wanted to make sure that everybody understands. Because there've been several reach-ins to me that says Cobb County says we're not, no longer doing this. So, but I've already submitted my, my application, so what's next? And we did not definitively say that if you started in Cobb County, you're gonna end with Cobb County. And then we, we've not said that.
If they don't, we'll just see them in line with the city of Mabelton.
Right, but I mean, people are sitting there wondering, you know, you know, where is it gonna, who's gonna definitively see my case or hear my case? And if we have cases that are currently pending at Cobb County, Cobb County's taking their money, and they've heard their case, but they've not instituted? So is that on the city to deal with that, or is that on Cobb County to deal with that? Who is gonna hear that through? Who's gonna hear that case through fruition to make sure that if you're trying to change the zoning from X to Y and that we know it's either us hearing it or them hearing it?
That, that's a very complicated question, because some of these cases can take up to one or two years.
Exactly, that, that's the concern.
And myself and Amelia, and probably myself, Amelia Giuliana, will be working out some of these details. But the way it's written right now, if something was approved in the county, but they didn't get their, let's say, site or landscaping plan completed, the way they state it right now is that they would have the district council member take a look and complete it on our side. All right, that's one case. That's just a bridge over. For example, something that was approved already in Cobb but didn't have its site plans or its landscaping or architectural stuffs completed, then they were gonna give it to whoever the council member was. And eventually this passes through and passes out, because once something's originated, Mabelton, we don't have that problem anymore. But if you got something that was originated in Cobb, classic example is what we saw today about this, this issue that was taken up in Cobb for this warehouse that they pulled the application. Obviously, we're gonna get that one. We gave out the business license.
Right.
So that's gonna end up in our court. So that's a pretty difficult question to answer, because some of these issues are one-year, two-year old. And Cobb may very well say, well, now it's in Mabelton, take it back up. So for us to be able to answer that right now, would be guessing and just giving out lip service. There are so many unique situations, but in general, in general, Cobb took money, they're supposed to finish that process. Or either give the money back and send them to us.
Because we didn't put in a moratorium at any point for zoning and those types of things. So we're kinda at the liberty of Cobb County and what it is that they're, they already said could happen versus...
It's, I, I stress again, when I say very complicated, and I'm talking real, I'm talking real time. We got a situation right now that was started in Cobb, got caught in this transition, that was stopped. And we're gonna help the applicant finish it, because it's in our city. And each situation is different. So I, I know you're looking for a certain answer on processes, but this is, it is so nuanced. I, I don't even know if myself, the clerk, the attorney, and the community developer could act it, but some of them are just unique. But in general, they take money, they finish process, or either they give money back and send them to us. That's the general answer. I, I know you're specific.
And, and Councilman, if it makes you feel better to date, Cobb County has not taken money for any service that they didn't complete the process for?
And, and again, when did that stop? Like, what is that date?
Well, it's, it may take a year, because you know, the, it may take a year for Cobb to complete that process.
No, not, not Cobb to complete it, but Cobb to say, this is the date when we are no longer accepting zoning applications.
Oh, well, the legal date is March third, that's when they should have said it.
So, so, and that, that, therein lies my, my concern, because I'm getting calls from folks who are saying that Cobb has already said that we're not going to accept any more applications.
And the bottom line is, we can't do anything about that.
Yeah, you're, you can follow them, Davis, asking the court to force them to accept it. But I don't think that, I mean, that's gonna cost your residents more than the value is. I mean, unfortunately, they are a government, and they have self-autonomy, and they can make that decision. And the only way to force their hand on it is for either the resident or the city to sue them. And for me, that's not a practical solution, given the short period between the transition of zoning. So if you didn't get your application in by their window and they've set this internal cutoff, unfortunately, you will have to wait a couple of weeks until Mabelton opens its doors.
And, and that, that's, there is my, one hundred percent my question, what is that date?
Well, that date right now is March third.
No, 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 that Cobb County said, no more. Because I've had several people who have reached into me, and do we know what that date is?
Last month, I think.
Because I, I don't know the right answer to some of these people who are reaching out to me who are trying to do something and saying that Cobb County shut the doors.
The only answer for us, the only answer that we can say is March third. But go ahead, Giuliana, you recognize.
Good evening, council. My apologies, I was trying to make sure the microphone was on. The date that Cobb County, because of the way that Cobb County is scheduled for accepting applications, they stopped taking applications in January, because Cobb County is a sixty day to get on their review. So an application accepted in January would have to be on their March hearing schedule to be heard. Seeing as how we indicated that we would be taking services and have indicated March third, they stopped the application and, taken applications in January, because the only scheduling time would be for March third.
Got it, thank you, perfect. So as of January, Cobb County is no longer accepting applications, taking money, all that sort of thing. So everything that we're dealing with as the city is gonna be anything that they did in December. And then are they gonna have, to your point, sixty days? Are they gonna have a February hearing on those things that they took in December?
Yes, sir. The applications that were taken, that were taken in November and December would make their cutoff timeframe for them to be heard, and their dockets were full. Once we indicated that March was our timeframe, them taking applications at that, and even taking fees at that timeframe would have to mean that those applicants would have to be on their March hearing schedule. So yes, if you've made an application in November, December, January, you should be on their docket. If you took an application in December, January, February, you should be on their docket. But if you try to put an application in January, February, March, you would not be on their docket.
Got it, so stay there. So then if the case itself was heard in February,
Yes, sir.
and there was an issue, and they asked them to come back, or you needed to do some landscaping, blah, 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 whatever that looks like, would you still be heard through Cobb County? Or will you be heard now through, will that be transferred over to Mabelton?
My understanding, but I will definitely email you with confirmation, is that if you've started your process with Cobb County, they've already done your review, then you would be with Cobb County, because they've already accepted your fee
Okay.
for application. But I'm not a hundred percent, and I will say that, I do want to be able to go and confirm that to you, if you don't mind, Councilman, if I can email you, speaking to Cobb County itself, as to how their internal process is dealing with the transition period itself.
Yeah, thank you. That's exactly what I need, thank you.
Can you send all of us that email?
Oh, absolutely, I apologize. I will make sure that all council gets, gets the same information.
And wait, before you confirm with them, can you wait till we have our transition discussion? Because I don't want them to think that it's an option to kick it back, like we're asking.
And, and, and it's not, it's not, it's, so we talked back in, this time last year, about a moratorium, we talked about all these different words. And we said, at one point, that it was a, if you start with Cobb County, you end with Cobb County, versus a, if you start with Cobb County, and then we transition, and now we're gonna hear it. So I, I'm just trying to figure out which, where we're going, like what, what Cobb County thinks we're doing.
There is no, I'm, I can't stress this enough, there is no specific, there are so many nuances, and even I appreciate what our director stated, that she would research. We have even in our ordinance, that if a case wa, in our ordinance, if a case was approved in Cobb County, but they hadn't had a chance to see it when it came to a place where it was time to look at architectural or landscaping, the plans, and see if they were compliant with what they said, they're saying they're gonna let you all look at it, and you actually get a chance to decide. So that's somebody that paid money in Cobb, started in Cobb, but our ordinance says at certain phase, if it's already approved by them,
True.
then the review may happen here. So it's so nuanced, there's so many things. I think, again, what the director said, the general, not specific. The general rule is if you paid money in Cobb, you finish in Cobb. But that is not a, that is not a absolute, thank you.
It's not absolute, because, because approval doesn't necessarily means the end of the case, that's the issue. So it could be approved, right? So I think if it gets to that point where it's approved or not, that's why they're, that's why they're backing up their date to make sure they have enough time to get it through the system. But if there's stipulations, conditions, all of those things, you know, I'm guessing from that standpoint, it could be Cobb that say, we're done. But there's still stipulations, conditions, that at that point in time, it's going through their process.
Right.
But, but we, but we do have that in our, we do have that in our ordinance.
I, I just wanna make sure the people that are trying to do business with the city of Mabelton understand that and, and what that looks like, and is Cobb County communicating to the individual claimant, I guess that's a word, this is what the process looks like going forward? And can I adequately verbalize what that, what this looks like going forward?
So I, I would say, and I know there's still transition discussions being had, but I think at that point in time, as a person is going through the system, if they still have conditions, stipulations, whatever, that's where our ordinance kicks in and goes, okay, if Cobb is saying they're done, you're not off the hook just because Cobb is done. If you have stipulations or conditions, you are going to have to come back to the city to ensure that those are finished. And, and if it's a question about making sure that's communicated to the applicant at that point in time, that is where our process comes in, and hopefully through this transition conversation that you guys are having with the county, as they are closing out applications on their end, they are communicating that information. And I remember Rob Hosack speaking that specifically. So I do think we have a process that we've already approved that will, that will meet the concern that you have. It's just a matter of making sure that it gets communicated through the process.
Right. And, and how are we communicating that? Just having an ordinance that we approve is not necessarily communicating that to the world.
No, I think that's, that goes back to the case by case. So when that case is going through, that's communicated at that time to them specifically.
And, and do we know that Cobb County is communicating with?
We, I hate to talk about this like this, we actually have a real-time case right now that we're dealing with.
Okay, so, so, you don't have to get into it, but Cobb County is communicating back to you these types of situations?
We actually communicated to Cobb County and said, hey, you got a situation.
Okay, so that's not, that's not good?
But the communication occurred.
Okay.
Apologize, Ms. Ock, I know you were saying something I didn't mean to cut you off.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, if it pleases the mayor, can we discuss more about the ordinance that's actually on the agenda?
Yes, indeed.
And the fee schedule?
Indeed. And, and to be clear, the only reason that conversation went as long as it did, and the reason it was germane, because it was talking specifically about fees relating to permits. So if they were submitting permits, I think, as the director said, as well as the city manager and our attorney, the expectation is, is if our residents have paid Cobb County a permitting fee, whatever that is, then that work will be handled through there. With that being said, I do think, I don't know if there's any other conversation or discussion to be had with this.
So it's, it's found in other cities that, that they assess a permit fee for backyard chickens. Are we gonna assess a higher fee for all these other ones as well? Or are we gonna just go ahead and put that to zero? If Rob Hosack finds that it has a fee, then that could be reflected in the ordinance? That it will be zero until it's proven otherwise to match with the county?
I think if she comes back and finds that there was a, there was a problem that Rob did not convert it over, yes. And then I think if there is... Say that again, ma'am? Okay.
Easy zero unless proven otherwise?
And, well, Councilman O'Adapo has still said that she wanted to see a comparative analysis.
Are we doing it for all the fees then?
I think we should. My ask was that everyone take a look and determine what fees they thought were adequate based on whatever research was done. So with that being said, I want to conclude the conversation for item twelve, twelve C, move to item twelve D. Item twelve D is the consideration of approval of resolution approving and adopting procedure for government representatives requesting speaking opportunities at city council meetings for other lawful purposes. The gist of this resolution is just to make sure that we, when the city of Mabelton during our meetings have visitors from other government agencies, that, that they are going to present, is basically just putting some guidelines and boundaries around that. From other agencies, not participating in a public comment, but not quite a public hearing, this gives them an opportunity to talk about things that are germane to the city, whether it's from, from the county or from the state, or one of the government-related agencies. The request around that is pretty simple with the resolution, is that it be germane to... to actions and activities that are within the City of Mableton, relevant to our city, and that they be given five minutes to present. That could be an oral presentation, it also could be electronic presentation to present to the mayor and council. At the conclusion of that five minutes, if it is determined that, if it is determined that members of the council have questions, we could extend that out for another five minutes, or we didn't even say a specific time, but that we could extend that out to ensure that council had opportunities to be able to ask questions of whoever the presenting person was. So that is the, that is the reason for the resolution, that is what it currently states. And at this point in time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution to provide an adoption for procedure for government representatives requesting speaking opportunities at the city council meetings and for other lawful purposes.
Can I only ask as we begin to adopt this, to clarify government representatives?
I think that was left generic on purpose. You know, I just mentioned county, state, government agencies, i.e. library, a state agency, so it was left generic on purpose.
Okay, and then do we need in the, in the SOP for how they get this, do we need to clean up the, each approved speaker will be allocated up to five minutes to present their topic? We had ten minutes before, and I know it says additional time may be allocated by the mayor to address city council questions and comments.
Are you asking that we change it back to ten?
I'm trying to figure out how we make sure that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the.
Councilwoman, can we please allow him to finish his thought?
I have a question.
That's interesting, no, we're not at that point yet, so.
Councilman, councilman, we're going to entertain a motion, once we get a second, if we do, we'll have opportunity to discuss and you can finish.
Councilman Ock, you're recognized.
Go ahead, make your motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, or to create the procedure for government representatives to request speaking opportunities at city council meetings or whatever it reads.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I second.
Can we clarify to approve the resolution adopting the procedure?
Yes, Councilman Ferguson, would you like to?
I'm sorry, I just got to the page. I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting a procedure for government representatives to request speaking opportunities at city council meetings and for other lawful purposes.
I second.
Thank you, motion's been made and seconded. Councilman Ferguson, the floor is yours to address your wording that you would potentially like changed.
No, I would simply like to ask if, in the SOP itself, we speak to, allocate it up to five minutes to present their topic, additional time may be allocated by the mayor to address city council questions and comments, I would simply like to ask if we would want to include something that gives them a ceiling, because we don't necessarily do it to date with this. Because we talked about that whole section, like we do with public comment, being up to twenty minutes or whatever that looks like, do we want to do that same thing for this?
This total, remember, I don't think we decided. No, 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 as a total, like you do a public hearing.
I see, I see.
So the question is.
The good part is that they have to give advance notice, so when the mayor approves the agenda, you'll never have a situation where you have twenty on the agenda, because it is subject to the mayor approving it, and then if he approves too many, then the council can just take off things the day of, but you are going to have that initial screening by the mayor as far as what he thinks, what he thinks time would accommodate.
I think what Councilman Ferguson is saying is, we don't want the person who's here to present to be in the meeting and we now take things off when they're already here for their presentation. So it would be ideal to have like a, maybe a twenty or thirty minute cap for that section, just like we have for public comment.
So then the question with that is, it takes us back to where we were the other day, then it limits and said we can only have two or maybe three speakers, period.
Which is okay.
I mean, I would love to one hundred percent say that if we're, if you've gotten five requests for this section, that this would limit you to not having all five present that day and pushing some off because we only have a thirty minute block for this section, because if not, this is going to make us.
A long meeting.
We can get fifteen different people that want to come in and speak that are government representatives.
But it's not, because we have a process to go through of approving the agenda before it even gets on there. So if we have five people, we're not going to approve five people.
Okay.
On the agenda.
So what is the maximum that you would approve, Mayor?
It was supposed to be twenty minutes, we were talking about it during the working session, a twenty minute cap for that section.
For the section, period.
Right, for the section.
I don't have a problem with that.
Because we literally have in the public comments, and I'm sorry, this is so, we literally have in public comments, two minutes per speaker, no more than thirty minutes for all speakers. So let's do the exact same thing, in my opinion, for this public officials.
We brought it up before, we just don't think we landed on anything.
And I think where we land is the exact same verbiage. No more than thirty minutes for all speakers.
I don't think we landed on anything, but I'm fine with twenty or thirty minutes, because we don't want an hour of presentation.
Okay, so if you do thirty minutes and what that would mean, so let's just say you do thirty minutes, and I'm going to assume that maybe you'll have ten minutes of discussion. So that means that the mayor would know approving the agenda, that if you want thirty minutes for this, then it wouldn't be practical to approve more than two.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, correct. I mean, and let's be real.
I mean, I think that's.
Commissioner Shellfield comes in and wants to have a conversation and talk about, you know, the county, and we have an opportunity to ask our questions as the city council as we sit, that's going to take ten minutes. And then, I don't know, John Ossoff decides he wants to come in and wants to present, you know, the state of his district and all that sort of thing.
He's going to get more than ten minutes. He's going to get more than ten minutes. I'll tell you right now.
So.
United States Senator shows up.
We've got a thirty minute buffer that we say that the mayor can then schedule those two accordingly. But I want to make sure that we're not, the thing that I don't like about this is the fact that the mayor is the only one that has the ability or opportunity to see what it is that they're trying to present. And there could be something that I feel is very, very important to be presented. I then need to go to the mayor and say, hey, get John off, sort of thing. But where I'm coming from is, we need to make sure that we're, I don't want the people that are sitting out here to be bogged down with a whole bunch of extracurricular political. So like I'm trying to limit it, but allow it while putting certain guidelines in for the timeframe. Like, I don't want them to, I don't want them to have to listen to, you know, ten minutes from everybody of why we're so great.
Is anyone against setting a cap of thirty minutes?
I think the cap should be thirty minutes for that section.
Yeah, just to close the loop on this.
So I just want to weigh in a little bit on this here, so our citizens are given two minutes to speak. If anyone deserves more time, it's probably them, because politicians, elected officials, they have a budget to set their own town halls, their own presentations and things of that nature. I don't want our meeting that's supposed to be for Mableton business to be monopolized by other interests. So that is why I thought it was more than fair to offer a five minute allotment if the mayor has someone he would like to speak to and address people, but tap it at that, I think it's fair. I don't think we need to give them thirty minutes, they can host their town hall.
But I don't think we're giving them thirty minutes, not the individual.
The individual does not get thirty minutes, the individual gets five minutes. And what we're saying is the entire section of the agenda is no more than thirty minutes, just like what is allotted for the public comment.
Councilman Ferguson, would you like to do a friendly amendment to your motion?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to your motion to approve it with a cap?
Mayor, quick question, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just want to be clear, what if we have one person, do we allow them to go on with questions and comments for thirty minutes? Just that five minutes cutoff and, okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Councilman Ferguson.
You going to put the spotlight on me? I got to get back to the page, hold on.
I think you, you made the original amendment.
Yeah.
I mean, the motion, sorry.
Oh, you got it.
While he's doing that.
Yes, so, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration and approval of a resolution approving adopting a procedure for government representatives to request speaking opportunities at city council meetings and for other lawful purposes, and that timeframe not to exceed thirty minutes on our agenda.
I second.
Well, with authorization for the attorney to amend this, to reflect at this timeframe.
With authorization for the attorney to amend as needed.
To place a thirty minute limitation on this particular section of the agenda.
Yes.
I second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further conversation, comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the ayes have it. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of new business that we have for this evening. There is no other business or discussion that we have on the agenda for this evening. With that being said, city manager, I'd like to move to any comments or announcement you may have, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just a recognition of another one of our outstanding employees. Get my notes here, city manager's comments. We have recently hired, and I know the director, Juliana is very proud to know that we recently hired a business license supervisor, Ms. Lamaya, she's joined our team, Juliana's glad to have her on board. And then I believe we have a promotion that's noteworthy, Ms. Lily Smith was promoted to administrative supervisor, she is now supervisor in supervisory role, that'll be effective, I think, in a week or so. And then the, Mr. Xavier Ross, he's always up to something, and he was, will be representing our city as a local government budgeting convention, where he was selected in an upcoming and in-person convening hosted by the Southern Economic Advancement Project. It's an institute that's on race, power, and political economy at the New School. It's going to take place in Phoenix, and he was selected out of a large pool of highly qualified and experienced local government budget analysis and executives. My challenge to anyone that leaves our city to go to any training is you must come back and share the knowledge. And so, welcome aboard our newest, under director Anjoku's camp, Ms. Lamaya as a business licensed supervisor, promotion of Lily to administrative supervisor, and then Xavier being accepted into program.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do know that Ms. Lamaya is someone who had wanted to join the city, and I'm happy that we have found a place for her and that she's able to come on, so looking forward to have her coming on. And of course, Ms. Lily Smith holds a special place in my heart as my EA for well over a year, so I'm happy to see her get a promotion and do the role that she's been doing for quite some time now, which is keeping everybody in order and everything in order officially, right, officially now. And as we move over to our, to our new buildings, I'm sure she's going to be up for the, for the task. Madam Attorney, any comments for this evening?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
No comments.
Thank you, Councilman Ola Dapo.
No comments, Mayor, I just want to thank everyone for.
But I want to thank you all for coming out to spend your time with us in this rainy and gloomy weather, so please stay safe, stay dry, and have a safe drive back home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jeff Kutt.
I'll try to be quick. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's rainy, wet, but we certainly do appreciate you taking the time to be here and to listen to us. I do want to congratulate our new employees, we're excited to have you on board, Ms. Lamaya, and also congratulations to Lily, she deserves the promotion to administrative supervisor, I'm really proud of her, and we always speak about excellence here in this city, and it's great just to see our employees passionate about the work that we do and the business of the city, and so we just really appreciate everyone. I do want to congratulate all the candidates who won their respective elections last night. I want to congratulate our District Four Commissioner for her reelection, I look forward to continuing to partner with those that are elected, and I look forward to continuing to bring substantial progress to our city. I do want to thank everyone who came out to vote, it's important that we vote, that we get involved, and, you know, the numbers are really low, but we have to get out and make sure we voice our position, whoever you select based off of those issues, that's vitally important, so we definitely need to get our numbers up. I do want to recognize Black History Month, I want to honor the resilience, contributions, and the legacy of Black Americans who have shaped our nation and our city. And Black History is just, you know, not one month, I do want to stress that, and it is American history. You know, we continue to fight for our justice and progress and equality and celebrate leaders in our community. You know, we have a lot of great leaders, entrepreneurs and changemakers that impact us every day, that strengthen our community, drive economic growth and enrich our culture. And so, just a reminder that this work is not done, and we just have to continue to advocate for equity, opportunity, and inclusion, not just in February, as I mentioned, but all year long. And then today, we had an opportunity to do a ribbon, ribbon cutting celebration at Cobb Works. It was just so great to see so many key individuals out there making a difference in our community, it took a collective effort for this one idea, right? They sparked this idea about workforce development, and how important it is for us to have that in our community, in my district and District Three. And I do want to take the opportunity to thank all those that were involved, our chair, Cobb County Chair, commissioners, trying to remember her name.
Keep it?
No.
Sonia.
Sonia, thank you.
Sonia Graham.
Thank you, yes, the CEO, Sonia, and all the partners that were involved, Mick, we have some talented individuals within our community, and it's just a great opportunity for them to leverage the resources that Cobb Works provides. And just, if you have an opportunity to go by there, you know, take a look, it's really nice, it was a historic firehouse, and now it's a beautiful space, so if you get a chance, please, please go by there, that'll be our interim workspace for the next, maybe year or so, two years or so, so please go by there. And then lastly, I hope you all have a happy Valentine's Day if you celebrate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Ock.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson.
The one thing that I'll bring up is, yes, I am so excited for the Cobb Works facility that has opened on Mableton Parkway, not just because I love Sonia to death and I love the mission, but also because of what it also represents for, you know, more holistic. We are a city that is looking to build the people that are in the city, so that at some point, you will want to come back. We are a city that is looking to build the people that are in the city so that at some point, you will, um, want to come back to the city. With all the experience that you've gained and everything that you've learned and everything that you understand about the world, bring it back and bring it into the city. So, you know, as we talk about, and I talked about this while I was campaigning, as we talk about zoning, code enforcement, um, what we need to do from a municipal court, what we need to do from just city government. I don't think that there's enough emphasis with the youth of today to understand what city government plays and the role that city government plays. We all hear about presidential, we all hear about congressional. I want you to know that where the rubber meets the road is city government. Because we just passed a trash ordinance last week, or two weeks ago, whenever that was. That's what affects you. So city government is what affects the world more so than does the presidential race. Yeah, the president, we gotta deal with that foolishness. But at the end of the day, it's making sure that you know your city leaders. So right now, this is your city leadership. As you go all the way around the bend, you saw, um, uh, our community development. You saw special projects, you see, um, sanitation, use, um, sanitation and beautification, waste and beautification, SWB. You see all those, but that's who your government is and who affects your day to day. So I, long way around saying, I wanna make sure that our youth understand the county level, city level, government, and what that is, and they want to get involved. That, that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harding?
I don't have any comments tonight, but I do wanna thank everyone for coming out and to wish you a safe drive home and a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I just, I'll make some very brief remarks here. I do want to, um, echo a couple of things been said. The, the Cobb Works facility opening is, is truly fantastic. I, I think it's a great opportunity to, um, see a vision that, that's been put in place so long ago. So many things that we talk about happening with the city and, um, I think larger in nature is that a lot of these things have been put in place a long time ago. You know, whether that's an old firehouse that's now being converted into, um, economic development, workspace, and job training. Or it could be a housing development that you see a ribbon cutting next week. Um, a lot of these things take a lot of time. It was mentioned a day that this was 10 years in the works to get this fire station rebuilt and now turned into a job workforce center. So I, I do want people to be mindful as we talk about the work that we need to do. Uh, we are talking about generational work, work, right? We're talking about works that literally could take decades to come to fruition. So while we are talking about ordinances and, and specific engagements, um, we are doing work that, that none of us on this dais right now may actually get to cut a ribbon on. And so, um, that is, that is impactful work, and I, I want us to always keep in mind that. I do wanna give a shout out to, uh, our District Commissioner Monique Sheffield on her successful election last night. Yes, the, the turnout was low. It's a, it's a special election, basically a special election, um, in, in an off year. And so, um, you don't get the turnout that one would expect for a much larger race or presidential race. But I'm thankful for e- every person in the city that takes the opportunity and time to go out to vote. I, I just wanna make note of one key, uh, meeting that I've had over the last couple of weeks. I've met with, um, speaking of Senator Ossoff, I met with his team, um, this week to discuss an issue that gets talked about a lot online, I see, and it's about our post office. Um, and no, our post office is not closing. But there is some continued work that needs to be done. I am happy that the front was, was fixed, um, finally. There's been some anti-theft, uh, devices that's been put in, some modified, uh, receptacles out front for people to put mail in. But the, the larger challenge that I'm talking with them about is, in the city of Mableton right now, we have over 16,000 households and businesses that do not have a Mableton address. Um, and I wanna reiterate that, um, when the city was created and the boundaries were made, at, at one point in time, Mableton was 30126, and we all knew that that was a zip code. Uh, that started changing a bit when Smyrna started coming into some of the area. But when our boundaries were created, uh, there were several other zip codes that were added. And so, um, the size of our city being almost 80,000, uh, leads us to where, um, we have a significant population that does not have Mableton addresses. Most of those are Ostel addresses, uh, some of those are Smyrna, and I think there's a very small number that are Marietta. I will re- reiterate to say, though, that in the creation of the city, no one, no one was taken out of one city and placed into our city. There is a lot of discussion about, well, I lived in Smyrna, I lived in, uh, I, I lived in, um, even earlier, I lived in Ostel. Bottom line is that's not true, right? Um, there's, there were only six cities, and we created a seventh. The vast majority of Cobb County was, and I think still is, unincorporated. Uh, before Mableton became a city, 85% of the county was unincorporated. So the vast majority of people do not live in a city. Although the way the United States Post Office is set up, everyone has to have a city address. So that is something that we are working through. I do not have, uh, a specific about getting this resolved, but Senator Ossoff's office, uh, and the Senator is, um, aware of this challenge that we have. And I gave a lit- litany of reasons as to why this is important. This isn't about vanity at all, right? There's a part of this that we could say is about branding our new city, um, but it's also about when we have people to come in to, uh, get a business license. You know, they want to know what, what to put on the business license, you know, and the fact that they may have an Ostel address, having to come to the city of Mableton, uh, can be quite challenging. I also brought up something I think is very poignant, that, um, not long after we were elected, there was a fire right down here on Riverside Parkway, on Riverside Drive, excuse me, and, um, when the Red Cross came in to set up their, um, their, their system to be able to help people, um, they set up, they set it up in, uh, a park over off Joe Jerkin's Drive in Ostel. And the reason they did that was because the apartment complex had an Ostel address. Now, the South Cobb, um, there's plenty of other areas that they could have gone to closer to there, but when they saw Ostel as the address, that's where they set up. So, um, you know, we, we hope that when EMS, um, our firemen, our, our police are answering calls and that they see an Ostel address, they understand and know where that is. Uh, but I do think it's very pertinent that with the number of addresses that we have, we actively work to do that. I've spoken with our, with our leadership at the local post office, I spoke with the postmaster several times, going back almost a year now. Um, and there has not been what I would consider significant movement on the issue. Uh, and after having several conversations and meetings with them, um, I decided to escalate this to Senator Ossoff's office. So, um, they're aware, they're obviously, um, concerned with this, and we'll be moving forward with this issue. So as I have more information about what's going on with that, I'll be sure to let everyone know. But until then, um, you know, we'll just keep working through the process. So with that being said, uh, there's no more business in front of us. Thank you all for coming tonight. I do appreciate it. Uh, at this point in time, Council, I'd like to.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
You did not make a recommendation, sir.
You did not. Shame, shame.
All right, with that being said, I don't even think you need to, to, to verbalize.
No.
At this point in time, uh, Council, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel.
I make a motion to go into executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, we will, um, go into executive session. Uh, if, ladies and gentlemen, if you're not gonna stay here until we come out, thank you for coming. We do appreciate your attendance and your support of our fair city. Thank you.